Good afternoon, everyone. Today is February 11th. This is the Douglas County Planning Commission, and I will call the meeting to order. We have two new members, and we'll recognize them at the appropriate time. So if you would first join us with Lori leading the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with opening public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Over matters which the Planning Commission has jurisdiction, supervision, or control, the Planning Commission wants to encourage a respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack, or interfering with the rights of others, the individual will be asked to stop speaking. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on public hearing agenda items that are identified for possible action and closing public comment. If you plan to speak on a specific agenda item that is on the public hearing agenda and identified for possible action, then please provide your public comment when that agenda item is heard. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Planning Commission. Additional public comment periods may be allowed on individual agenda items at the discretion of the chairperson. It is requested that members of the public comment on those agenda items when they are considered. Is there opening public comment? Again, please sign the sign-in sheet, and then you can begin your comments, and we will state your name for the record also, and then we'll begin your three minutes.
Good afternoon. Ellie Waller. This morning, I attended the Legislative Ways and Means Committee. TRPA was presenting budget as well as the, for those that don't know, Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, as well as Mr. Settlmeyer, Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. So it was a really good eye-opener to how to learn what goes on and how budgets are obtained. Tomorrow, I'll be attending the TRPA Advisory Planning Commission to provide public testimony to the Planning Commission for recommendations to be forwarded to their governing board on our South Shore area plan that has been before you. This is the zoning and map amendments, as you had discussed. To be clear, Barton Hospital and Associated Healthcare Subdistrict are not being reviewed as they were removed and will be heard at another time. Also, TRPA will be initiating a basin-wide Phase II Affordable Housing Amendment to our area plan, as well as Placer County's tomorrow. That's something that I'm hoping that Douglas County can get a presentation. I know staff has tried and have been denied having a presentation. I'm not sure why they don't want to come visit our Planning Commission or our Board of Commissioners. Many in the public may not know that we haven't really engaged in that Phase II, and I have participated for two and a half years, so I will be providing comments on that subject as well tomorrow. I strongly urge you, many of you hopefully that might be interested in the future, how TRPA Advisory Planning Commission discusses amendments and provides recommendations to the TRPA Governing Board. That's at 9:30 tomorrow morning at the TRPA offices at 128 Market Street off of Kingsbury Grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment? Paul.
Thanks very much, Chairman. I am Paul Bruno. As a member of the public, but also as a member of the Planning Commission, want to inform our industrious and very highly competent staff, as well as the public, that I will not be here for the March meeting. I'm undergoing a medical procedure, which I have preparation for at the end of February. It will take me through about the third week of March, and I will just be unavailable. So my apologies to all. I'll be back in April and ready to go at our April meeting. So thanks.
Thank you, Paul. We wish you the best, and we know you'll be a strong member when you're back in April. So thank you very much. If there's no other public comment, then yes. If you'd like to make public comment, please approach the microphone, sign in, state your name, and give your comment.
Good afternoon. Jeff Sheminar, Trichester Estates resident. I just wanted to make a brief comment about the Martin Creek Townhome development that you guys are going to talk about today.
Excuse me. If you're here to make comment on that item, we request that you make the comment when we hear that item, unless you're not able to be here.
No, I can do that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Is there additional public comment? Seeing none, then, I will close public comment. Before we move to approval of the agenda, I do want to recognize that we have two new members of the Planning Commission, Dan St. John and Jim McCallum. Welcome, gentlemen. We look forward to your participation. If you would like to make any opening comments or remarks, you can make them at this point. If not, we'll move to the rest of the agenda. Great. Thank you. Welcome. We will now move to approval of the agenda. This is for possible action, approval of the proposed agenda. The Planning Commission reserves the right to take items in a different order, to combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and to remove items from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. And we will be postponing and not considering Agenda Item Number Four, which is the discussion of VHR Ordinance 2025-1650. That item will not be heard at the Planning Commission today. So with that in mind, does anyone have any questions on the agenda or would like to make a motion on approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda.
Bryce moves to approve the agenda, and Maureen seconds the approval.
Mr. Chair.
A.J.
Is that a motion to approve the agenda without Item Four?
Sorry. I move to approve the agenda, removing Item Number Four. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you very much, A.J. Thank you, Bryce. Thank you, Maureen. So the question is on approving the agenda with the deletion of Agenda Item Four. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will now move to approve the minutes. This is for possible action, discussion to approve the draft minutes of the December 10th, 2024 meeting of the Planning Commission. Maureen.
Mr. Chair, I had a small correction that I gave to the clerk last week. If no one else has any corrections, I would like to move for approval of the minutes from December 10th, 2024.
Maureen has moved to approve the minutes of December 10th, 2024 meeting. Mr. McCallum.
I will need to abstain, as I wasn't a member.
Thank you very much. Jim will be abstaining, since he was not a member at that meeting. Dan, would you like to abstain? It's not a requirement that you abstain? Okay. Thank you. It's all at the prerogative of the individual members. The minutes are public record, and any member of the Planning Commission or non-member of the Planning Commission can exercise their right to comment on the minutes. Maureen has made the motion. Is there a second?
So moved.
Bryce seconds the motion to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Jim, you'll go on the record as abstaining. So this would be six in favor and one abstention. So the minutes are approved. We will now move to the first item on the agenda. This is for possible action, discussion of the election of Chair and Vice Chair in compliance with Chapter 2.06 of the Douglas County Code and Section 2.1 of the Planning Commission bylaws. I would like to say it's been an honor and a privilege to be Chair for the last year. I do want to thank all of the members of the Planning Commission and the staff for their great participation and their excellent service to the county. And I would entertain suggestions on a possible Chair. We'll take them individually, if that's all right with the members of the Planning Commission. So is there a suggestion or a motion for the Chair of the Planning Commission? Bryce.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that Maureen Casey be Chair.
Is there a second to the motion? Paul seconds Bryce's motion that Maureen be Chair of the Planning Commission. Is there discussion?
One item of discussion.
Yes, Paul.
I must say, Chairman, you ran a tight ship, and it has been a pleasure this last year having you as the Chairman.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. I guess, A.J., in a formal sense, I should ask for public comment, since this is for possible action. So I will, before we take a vote or have any further discussion, ask for public comment on this agenda item. You can comment on either the Chair or the Vice Chair. That might be more efficient, if there is public comment. Seeing no public comment, then I'll close public comment on Agenda Item One and entertain discussion on Bryce's motion that Maureen be appointed Chair. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For our two new members, I need to tell you that during my tenure, the first year was Maureen Casey was our Chairperson and did a magnificent job, which is part of the reason why I seconded, because this is a known product, and indeed, she did a magnificent job during my tenure, my initial tenure, and that is why I seconded the motion.
Thank you, Paul. Any further discussion? Lori.
I just want to comment on the fantastic job that you've done, Chairman, in the past year. This is the year that, my first year, my first Chairman, I think you did a fantastic job. I know Maureen will do a fantastic job as well, so thank you for your support.
Thank you for your comments. Any further discussion? Jim.
I have attended Planning Commission meetings in the past with both as Mr. Walter is Chairman and as Maureen is Chairman, and I am very much in favor of Maureen, so I think she'll do a good job.
Thank you, Jim. Any other comments? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of electing Maureen as Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We will now move to election of the Vice Chair. Is there a motion for election of a Vice Chair? Paul.
I'd like to move that Bryce Klutz, a member of Planning Commission and current Vice Chair, to the extent that he would accept, I'd like to nominate him for the Vice Chair position for the upcoming year.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second? Lori.
I will second that.
Thank you very much, Lori. I would concur. Bryce has done an excellent job as Vice Chair. We rely on him for a whole host of duties, many of which are unseen, and he does an excellent job, so I am in concurrence with that. Any other comments on the motion?
Well, Bryce, you're not Mark, but you'll do.
Well, it's this left foot of mine that keeps you chairs in line, so that's what, when he says unforeseen, it's the kicks that I do underneath the table.
Thank you. Any other comments on the motion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Bryce being elected Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We will now then take about a three or four-minute recess.
Mr. Former Chair, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Maureen.
I learned so much about being Chair from you. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So we'll take a three or four-minute recess, and we'll change chairs, and then we will
I recall this meeting of the Douglas County Planning Commission to order. Item number two for presentation only, presentation by the Douglas County Community Development Department on Land Use, Planning and Development Applications, and the respective roles of the Douglas County Community Development Staff, the Planning Commission, and the Board of County Commissioners. Kate Morales O'Neil, no mistakes there, Kate, presenting.
Thank you, Chairwoman Casey. For the record, Kate Morales O'Neil, Planning Division. Good afternoon to all of you today. Welcome, Mr. McCallum and Mr. St. John. We appreciate your dedication and willingness to be on the Planning Commission. You have a very important role, but the meeting that we had, I have no doubt you'll be a great asset to the Commission. This presentation will look familiar to most of you, but for Mr. McCallum and Mr. St. John, this is new to them, and just think of this like as a refresher course, in case there's anything you might have forgotten. So what is planning and why do we plan? So I want to begin with a few quotes from the American Planning Association that is a good summary of our role in planning and how important it is to our communities. The first being, the goal of planning is to maximize the health and economic well-being of residents in ways that reflect the unique needs, desire, and culture of those who live and work within the community. Cities and counties need to consider what can and should happen to a community, how it should grow and change, and what it should offer residents 10, 15, or even 20 years into the future. Lastly, planning establishes goals and policies for directing and managing the future growth and development of a community or region. So the most important thing, I believe, in planning is proper planning and how it helps us improve our community and its members. How do we accomplish this? Well, let's take a look at these key components to proper planning. First is to develop a common vision. This will increase buy-in and effectiveness of plans and save money by avoiding duplication, sizing facilities properly, and promoting efficient and cost-effective investments. We also need to create a sense of place and reinforce sense of community by incorporating architectural, environmental, and aesthetic elements as part of the planning to connect people to their community. Thirdly, proper planning creates and enhances property values by enhancing these values with a community that plans for parks, trails, playgrounds, transit, and other amenities. In relation to planning for parks and trails, this directly relates to how planning safeguards public health and safety. Planning provides opportunities with access to physical activity and healthy foods. Public safety is protected with strong building codes and other regulations to prevent fire or flooding, as well as designing buildings, parking lots, streets, and neighborhoods to reduce opportunities for crime. In addition, proper planning must provide public facilities and infrastructure by preparing communities to meet future demands for public services and facilities, such as water and sewer systems, roads and transit lines, fire and police stations, schools, parks, and libraries. Planning can improve economic development. Well-planned communities offer residents and businesses a range of convenient and affordable choices. It can also protect the environment and conserve resources by identifying important natural and cultural resources, conserve these resources, and protect the environment. Lastly, proper planning needs to set clear expectations to all those involved in the process, landowners, developers, builders, boards, community members, and a staff reviewing application in order to help minimize conflict. The Master Plan is a very important part of any land use in Nevada. The Douglas County Master Plan was updated in 2020, and the next update will be this year. NRS, which is the Nevada Revised Statute, requires a Master Plan to be created when a Planning Commission has been established. The Master Plan is adopted by the Planning Commission, then the governing body. The Master Plan is a long-term general plan for physical development of the county and is typically looking 10 to 20 years into the future. It also identifies current issues and needs in the community. The Master Plan, again, is the general plan that summarizes goals but does not indicate detailed regulations. We see more specific or detailed regulations in our Douglas County Title 20 Development Code. Lastly, the Master Plan includes actions to achieve goals. This is seen in the implementation part of our Master Plan. What are the actions, and how do we get there and accomplish each goal? So now that we see what the Master Plan is and why is it important, let's look at how we implement the plan. First and foremost, it starts with Title 20 and zoning for land uses. Zoning is what separates a community into zones in order to regulate land uses, and the goal is to make sure these uses are compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. In Douglas County, we utilize Title 20 to regulate development and determine whether to approve or deny any project. Some of the provisions from the Development Code we look at when determining the validity of a project are zoning and land division to floodplain regulations, growth management, as well as processes for applications for planning, engineering, and for building permits. Next, let's take a look at who does what in the planning process, beginning with the Community Development Department's staff. We are responsible for day-to-day implementation of the Master Plan and Title 20 of Douglas County Development Code. We review development applications per Master Plan and Title 20 Development Code. We are responsible for providing a high level of customer support. We track and issue building and zoning permits, review plans, and respond to development questions, or even community inquiries, general inquiries. We prepare public notice for hearings. We provide technical advice to the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners during public hearings. And lastly, administratively, hear minor development applications as allowed by Development Code Title 20. An example would be design reviews, minor variances, and tentative parcel maps. This slide is an important one regarding our advisory bodies in Douglas County, which are the Town of Genoa, the Town of Minden, and the Town of Gardinerville. Per Douglas County 20.08, all zoning permits and tentative parcel maps and subdivision maps within town boundaries must be reviewed by the town prior to final actions. Exceptions to this would be sign reviews or temporary use permits or surveys. No final action shall be taken until a formal written recommendation has been received by the director or hearing body. Failure of an advisory body to make a recommendation may not operate to deprive an applicant of statutory rights. There are timelines that are set by NRS for some of these items to be heard by various boards and commissions. Actions by an advisory body are evidence to be considered by the final decision-maker. Resolution 20.20R-125, Douglas County will implement the Minden and Gardinerville Design Standards. Douglas County works to implement these town design standards to the greatest extent possible. So when recommendations are given to the county, more times than not, we implement and include their conditions of approval within our conditions of approval. You as the Planning Commission body are a very important part of the planning process. A Planning Commission is required by NRS, as Douglas County does have a population of more than 45,000 people. The Planning Commission has seven members appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. Members serve a four-year term, and the Planning Commission meets the second Tuesday of each month. The Planning Commission reviews various applications, such as amendments to the Master Plan, zoning map and zoning text amendments, as well as subdivision maps and plan developments. The Planning Commission are a recommending body, just as the towns are, so you as members are not the final decision-maker, with the exceptions of approvals for special use permit, major variance requests, and variance to improvement standards. The final decision-maker in the planning process is the Board of County Commissioners. The Commissioner's role is also vital in the planning process as Commissioners. They evaluate recommendations from Planning Commission, staff analysis, and public input. They are the final decision-maker on Master Plan amendments, zoning map and text amendments, and subdivision maps, and they hear appeals of special use permits and variances from the Planning Commission. Variants also associated with an application heard by the PC are also heard by the B.O.C.C. So here I have a brief flow chart of how the process works, starting with a typical planning application, and how it proceeds through this process. So first is pre-apps. We often encourage these pre-app meetings with an applicant to address any issues, maybe get the kinks out, something that we might see, because we want the applicant to avoid having to pay like for filing fees or design work, because a lot of times when they bring in an initial plan, we might be able to see some issues that are going to occur. So before they spend the money on a professional plan set, we can say, hey, you're going to need to make some revisions, you know, prior to submitting your application, and this collaborative work can also help make for a better product moving forward. Secondly, in regards to the application, so it's reviewed for completeness for three days. So once they submit, there's three days to ensure that the documents that are required have been submitted and they're complete. Once that happens and we've determined it is complete, then it's distributed to the various departments, planning, engineering, and the different workflow will be set up. So if an application comes in and I'm the planner, then it will be assigned to me. Jeremy Hutchins may be the engineer on the project. It would be assigned to him, so we know throughout the process who's on the workflow for each application. Typically, within a few weeks, we have an internal project meeting. Usually, it's two weeks for staff to discuss projects and take any notes based on our discussion. Next, we Next, we would send out to the applicant to notify them that corrections are required prior to moving forward and/or conditions of approval with the application. So sometimes they move quicker than other times, depending on how many corrections we might be requiring, whether we feel a correction can be actually a condition of approval, or is it something we need them to correct before we even move forward. In addition, we also provide a staff applicant meeting within our process. We implemented this last year. Many major projects that staff encounter are projects that have been approved years earlier. You're probably all familiar with Virginia Ranch. That's a really good example. That—the this staff applicant meeting that we had with Virginia Ranch, we were able to meet with them to discuss some conditions and to make suggestions to ensure the best project was presented to the community. What can happen is when something was approved 20 years ago, things have changed. So that staff applicant meeting, prior to moving forward with additional review, we were able to, you know, say, I think we should do this and not do this moving forward, seeing how code has changed and some things may have changed over the course of 20 years. If staff does run into a project, and we make suggestions, and there's a major issue with the project, and the applicant disagrees and doesn't want to make any improvements, and they want to move forward to a scheduled public hearing, staff at that point would recommend denial if appropriate, and staff can support that based on a finding. So if we feel that it's a major issue, we call it big rocks, then we will go back, you know, to that applicant. But it is—it is up to the applicant. If they feel that they've met all the findings and they can move forward, they are more willing to do so. Once the review is complete, staff prepares a staff report for each of the applicable advisory bodies and the Board of County Commissioners. Staff report will either have conditions of approval and findings, or justification for denial. The report is laid out for you stating the summary of the project, including some background on the site, images, and descriptions of zoning, the surrounding zoning, and those types of things. You will see a description of the project, as well as an evaluation of the project ending with findings of fact. If you project—if your project is within, again, the Town of Minden, Gardinerville, or Genoa, then the project would be heard at their town board meeting, and they would make a recommendation to staff. So we would receive a letter from the town manager giving us the—you know, what happened at the board meeting, and what the possible action, what the vote was, and whether or not they're recommending approval or denial, and that letter usually includes conditions of approval also. And staff will include that in the staff report when applicable. The Planning Commission, in turn, makes recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. So once we make a recommendation to the Planning Commission, you've—you make a recommendation on an item, and then that item moves to the Board of County Commissioners, with the exception of things like a special use permit, ones that really are only heard—major variances are only heard by the Planning Commission. I've mentioned these previously, so I'll skim through these real quick. The master plan amendment applications, these are accepted annually in June and December, so only twice a year. They are approved by you, the Planning Commission, then adopted by resolution by the Board of County Commissioners. Zoning map and zoning text amendments are heard by the Planning Commission also and Board in any given month. The Board adopts these amendments by ordinance after two readings. Plan development is another zoning layer—we refer to them as PDs—is another zoning layer, and the use and intensity must be compatible with the base zoning and the master plan. The zoning standards can differ from existing, but does require minimum of a 25% open space within that plan development. Typical applications heard—tentative subdivision maps—you're hearing one of those today. Those are land divisions creating five or more parcels. Again, heard by you, the Planning Commission, and then proceeds to the Board of County Commissioners. Special use permits is generally compatible with the zoning, but gives Planning Commission an opportunity for an additional layer of review. Again, these are only heard by the Planning Commission unless it is appealed. So if the applicant wants to appeal your decision, for example, you've denied their special use permit, they can appeal that, and it would be heard by the Board of County Commissioners. So what are the findings of fact? So ultimately, as I said, the staff report is going to end on the findings of fact, or the evaluations of those findings by staff, to determine if we feel the applicant has met the findings, or they failed to meet the findings of fact. This is the most important sentence in this presentation. In order to approve or deny a request, the approving body must make a recommendation indicating whether a proposal meets the findings of fact. This is vital when determining validity of a request. If—as a member of the governing body, you want to deny a project, it must come from a finding—or findings—that you feel an applicant did not meet, and that finding, or again, findings, are voiced when you are requesting denial. So when you're either not going with a motion, you would include, I'm denying this project based on the applicant's, you know, inability to meet finding number four. The findings are found in NRS, and then some are particular to Douglas County, such as being bring transparency, order, and predictability to a proceeding, allow the applicant and public to understand the factors the commission consider, provide a rational structure to guide meetings. The burden is on the applicant to prove that the standards have been met. That's really important. There's a misnomer that it's up to staff to determine. We do—we give our—you know, based on what we think, but ultimately, it's up to the applicant to prove that. So it's not up to staff to prove it to you. It's up to the applicant to prove whether or not they have met a finding—met all the findings. Staff will provide unbiased analysis of the findings in the staff report. Comments made by applicant, public, staff, or commissioners should always relate to the findings of fact, and it must be followed in order to reduce the chance of litigation. You can see the findings of fact are very important, so you really want to pay close attention to those when you are reviewing staff reports. That wraps up my presentation. Again, I appreciate your attention today, and again, your dedication to civic duty and our community. I know it's a lot to remember all the time in these meetings. I know these packets at times can be 1,000 pages, so I don't think a people realize—it is—it does take a lot of work, so your work is greatly appreciated. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer any at this time.
Thank you, Kate.
You're welcome.
Wonderful presentation, as always. Are there questions? Comments? Kirk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kate, if you can go back to how does the process work slide, I think that was a very informative one that a lot of people will miss. There are nine steps there, and it's really not until you get to the seventh or even the eighth one that it really becomes a matter of public record, and we're all clued into what's going on. And I just want to praise the staff and highlight to everybody that the staff goes through those first six steps in great detail and with a lot of time and effort. We have a smaller staff than I think we'd like to have to do all the things, and as Kate has pointed out to me many times, the volume of requests and information that they have to process in those first steps is significant. So I do want to pay recognition to the good work of staff for doing all the things that they do behind the scenes to get us to the point we are today on the one project or on the other projects come forward. So again, I thank the staff for the effort that they put in and the time that they put in on the product that they produce. So thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Dan?
Just a simple question. Does Chapter 20 define what you have to address in terms of findings of facts? Where do those come from?
Yes, that is correct. So for example, in Title 20, today you're going to see a tentative subdivision map. So within Title 20, there are findings you have to meet for that application. So the various applications do have findings they have to meet. Good question, Mr. St. John. And thank you, Chairman Walder, also not chairman—oops, sorry. Mr. Walder. I appreciate that, and I'm sure my staff is listening. They do—the amount of work they do, and I think it's just the daily inquiries that people don't understand. I mean, they do over thousands of inquiries a year, so it's greatly appreciated, and I'm always proud to have them acknowledged because they definitely deserve it. So thank you.
So when—we see something in a project that's a finding of fact—
Jim, please speak into your microphone.
Oh. That you've listed as a find—that you've listed in the affirmative, but maybe I have questions, and I think maybe the applicant could have done something better. Is that proper to question that or bring that up?
Good question, Mr. McCallum. Absolutely. So you could do it one of two ways, and I would consider both ways. You could reach out to the planner on the project and just say, hey, I'm reading your staff report, and I just have a couple questions about this finding. Maybe it's just you want to be clear on what the finding means. And maybe the planner then gives you their answer. But more importantly, the applicant presents at the project. So for example, today for the tentative subdivision map, the applicant representative will be here, and if you have a question about a specific finding, you would also, more appropriately, address that with the applicant.
Thank you.
Kate, a question. Since we are so limited in staff and staff's time is so limited to be responding to emails, is there a preferred way of communicating with staff and the Planning Commission?
Another good question. Thank you, Chairwoman Casey. You know, we have a planning inbox, planning@DouglasMV.org. Dot org or dot US? Ellie, I know you know. What is it? Ellie, I know you know. What—is it plant—is it dot org? US. Dot US. I knew Ellie would. Thank you, Ms. Waller, for that. See, I don't email, so in my defense, I usually don't email our own planning inbox. But the planning inbox staff—but you can also—you can always email us directly, because normally you'll know who the planner is, but general inquiries would be the planning inbox. You can call the general number that we have on the website or the planning—if it's a general question, like, hey, I want to know what I can do on my parcel. And we get a lot of those on a daily basis. But that's the best way is an email. In this day and age, it's just trying—we're keeping up with emails is just more efficient than trying to keep up—with phone calls.
Thank you. I know you're so bogged down.
I appreciate that question.
That it's—it's just very important that we not spend a lot of time tying up staff with questions that could best be answered other ways. Thank you, Kate, again. Any other questions? And since this is not for action, there will be no public comment. And we will move on to item number three, which is for possible action. Discussion on a tentative subdivision map application DP 24-0253, a request to divide a 4.45 acre parcel into 30 parcels consisting of 29 multifamily individually-owned units parcels and one common space parcel. The subject parcel is a multifamily residential in the Gardinerville Community Plan. Parcel is located off of Giles Lane behind Gardinerville Elementary School. The applicant's representative is Keith Rubin, R.O. Anderson, Wilson Engineering Company, and the owner is Chip Hanley, Santa Inez Valley Construction, APN 1320-33-402-079. Kate Morales O'Neil presenting.
Thank you, Chairwoman Casey. So for the record, Kate Morales O'Neil, Planning Division. I do want—I do have some clarification on this item. In the financial impact section on page 73 of your packet, I inadvertently transferred over some previous information from another project. It's normally something that is part of every financial impact. This one is a little different. Specifically, this project will establish an HOA, and that HOA will maintain the open space, the RV lot, the guest parking, the private drive aisle, the storm drain facilities, and landscaping. So in that financial statement, we mention, you know, the—that the county—they could offer that—the road—that's—that's an incorrect statement, and that was my bad. Water will be maintained by Gardinerville Water Company and sewer by the Minden-Gardinerville Sewer District. The subject parcel is a multifamily residential and is in the Gardinerville Community Plan. The project consists of 29 multifamily individually-owned units and one common open space parcel. In addition, staff approved a previous design review application in 2023, and a recent modification to that design review—the only modification was changing the ownership from a single owner of that subject parcel to offering for sale 29 individual units. So due to financing terms, the owner—it just became not a viable situation to keep as one ownership and, you know, lease or rent units, and so the decision was made by the owner for these individually-owned units. We did receive—and I wanted to point this out because I think it's important—we did receive a few public comments regarding two-story homes and how that would block the views of adjacent homes. So although this project does consist of one-story units only, it is important to share that views are not protected in code. So buying next to a vacant land does not mean that land won't be developed in the future. And—and we do run into this quite a bit here in the valley when community members purchase a property next to vacant land, and they have these spectacular views of the mountains. So I—I—I know it can be really frustrating because I—we get these phone calls when then a development comes in years later on what was previously a vacant land. But although we emphasize—we empathize with them losing their views, it's not—from a planning perspective and the Douglas County Title 20 Development Code, we cannot prevent a developer from building on vacant land with an allowed use because it may obstruct views from neighboring properties. Unfortunately, it just—that—that's not part of code. That being said, planning does look at compatibility to neighboring properties when reviewing projects. Unfortunately, that does not mean that a two-story development won't be next to a one-story development. That does happen. But again, in this particular case, it is one-story units, but I just wanted to address because we got several comments about that. As much as we would like to protect people's views, it's just not a reality, and it's not, unfortunately, part of code or something that we can—we can support. I also want to add that on February 4th, the Town of Gardinerville Board unanimously approved this tentative subdivision map, requested and included additional conditions of approval. The town board approval letter was part of supplemental. Again, that—that just happened on the 4th. We had already—it was too late to get it in the packet, so this letter will be attached to the county conditions of approval that begin on page 80 of the packet. So typically, we have a little bit more time, and when you see the conditions of approval in your staff report, you'd see right after the county conditions is the town conditions. Again, most of the time, at least in my experience here at the county, we support that—the town, any of the town's conditional—conditions of approval. Sometimes there might be a disagreement. It is ultimately up to the county because— It is ultimately up to the county because the towns are advisory. In this case, we are included in conditions of approval that the town has requested as part of our county conditions of approval. Staff does believe the applicant has met the findings for this tentative subdivision map. So, at this time, I know it mentioned Keith as a representative, but I'd like to introduce Rob Anderson of Wilson Engineering, formerly R.O. Anderson. Mr. Anderson will be providing a PowerPoint presentation on this project. And then, he can address any specific questions that you may have on the proposed Martin Creek project.
Thank you, Kate.
Hi, Rob.
Rob, before you get started, I would like to disclose that I did attend the Gardnaville meeting and ask if there are any other disclosures by other planning commissioners? Does anyone own property within the noticing area? Dan?
Just let me know when to move forward. Is that okay?
Dan? Do you own property within the disclosing area, noticing area? Okay. Do you have any disclosures to make? Okay. Jim, you're fine? You live in the ranches?
I don't own any property. I did visit the site, other than that, no.
Any conversations with the applicant or anyone? Okay. Just checking. Want to make sure. Thank you, Rob.
Madam Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is Rob Anderson. I am now with Wilson Engineering, formerly R.O. Anderson Engineering. I'm here today on behalf of Santa Inez Valley Construction. The application before you, as Ms. Morales pointed out, is a request for a tentative subdivision. The application is a little bit unique. Again, Kate made reference to this, that this project already enjoys a design review approval. So, the elevations are set, the design is set of the street layout that's already been previously approved. The request that's before this board today is merely a tentative subdivision map to approve individual ownerships as opposed to having a rental project. So, it's a, the project is a market rate project. It is a single-family, excuse me, is a single-story. Structures are proposed. The design, again, has been approved and is part of the, part of your package as well. Additionally, there's been some miscommunications, maybe even some misunderstandings really relative to the ability to have more than 20 units and what someone might characterize as a cul-de-sac. And so, I'll speak to this during the presentation. But this project is fully sprinkled and therefore falls under the Fire Code as townhomes, which allows more than 20 units under Douglas County Code. The International Fire Code does permit more than 20 units in what some people might consider a cul-de-sac. But with that, if you could, move to the next slide. So, again, as Kate pointed out, the Town of Gardnaville heard this last Tuesday, a week ago. That evening, they did support it unanimously. There were comments from various commissioners or town board members, excuse me, that were supportive of it, particularly that it's a market rate rather than a rental or even a low-income housing project. They were appreciative of the fact that it was single-family units. There was some discussion about the width of the road, the width of the driveway, which I will speak to now, or as we go through this. So, each unit will be owned privately owned, each unit before sale. It is a townhome-related project where they have common walls. Most units have common walls. There are no ownerships above in a second story, so these are truly just townhomes. They have the undivided ownership interest. As I mentioned in my initial introductory remarks, each is equipped with a fire sprinkler system in accordance with International Fire Code. The driveway that is proposed, which you'll see on the site plan here in a moment, is privately owned and is to be privately maintained by the homeowners association. Again, the association would be established. And again, as I referenced in my introductory remarks, the homes will each be constructed not in, not only in compliance with the International Fire Code, but also certainly the international codes that are applicable to the building permits. So, this slide on the left, the left side, shows you the relationship of the project site to Trichester Estates, which bounds it on the east, Gardnaville Elementary to the south. The white space to the left where the project location notation is, is actually the Martin Slough corridor that's owned by the Town of Gardnaville. The Martin Slough Trail runs through there. And then, you can see Gilman Avenue up on, above. The diagram to the right is more of a vicinity map, provides a larger-scale context for where the project location is. So, it is immediately north of the Gardnaville Elementary School. Okay? The zoning is, and land use are both shown on this exhibit. There is no changes proposed. Each, in each instance, both for the land use and the zoning, the project complies with those as previously established, not only by the planning commission, but the Board of County Commissioners. These are just some photos of the, from the site to show you. The bottom-left photo is one that looks back towards Gardnaville Elementary School, and you can see the fence in the foreground there, and mountains certainly in the rear. Other sketches or other photos there are to the properties to the, lying to the north. The upper-left-hand corner is one to the northwest from the site, and that shows you the old historic, or what I would consider the historic Hellwinkle Barn that's existed there for many, many decades. Continue, please. This is the tentative subdivision map layout. The, I don't have a pointer, but to the, what I would, north is to the top of the page. To the right is Giles Avenue where it enters the property. Giles Avenue was extended as part of Trichester Estates Phase 1 in 1992-ish. It was extended there at the request of Douglas County School District for the purpose of providing a secondary accessway to get the buses off of Toller Lane. Those of you that might have been here in 1989, 1990 timeframe, the congestion that we see in front of Gardnaville Elementary School was magnified because they didn't have, or, excuse me, that we see in front of Carson Valley Middle School was also magnified there at Toller Lane. This secondary route provided the ability for the school buses to come out Giles, go around, come down Gilman, and reach the signal there. So, that was a discussion between the developer at that time and the school district. They negotiated to have a common easement there so that this property could be developed in the future where the cursor is shown, where Ms. Morales is showing that. That is a 50-foot-wide common access easement, common for both properties, both the school district and also what is now owned by Santa Inez Construction. The, so, access to the property is through Giles Lane, a public, a street right-of-way, publicly maintained. And then, the school district has pavement to the south that's shown there. And then, there would be pavement to the north as we come in. There's been quite a bit of discussion during these hearings with the Town of Gardnaville about that access point. Because during, when school is let out, children are picked up at that location. Families reach out and pick them, and it gets kind of congested. Several of the neighbors inside Trichester Estates have commented on that. The design here to, will extend essentially Giles Lane and the width of Giles Lane to the west, to the west side of that first intersection of the driveway. That will afford enough circulation, in our estimation, to handle that traffic, at least the combined traffic now with these residents plus the school traffic, and should, should work well. To, and frankly, consistent with the original plan when it was proposed and ultimately adopted by the school district and the developer. So, that is the configuration. That is a driveway that goes around, looped around, as you see. It does have separate parking spaces provided in a couple of locations. The northwest corner is a retention basin. We've tried to size that, well, certainly, it's been sized to meet the standards of Douglas County, but it's also been sized, hopefully, with the, and would be landscaped in a fashion that could be used for a multi-use facility. So, when there wasn't water standing in there, children could play in it if they chose or whatever the use might be of the residents within the development. And then, each of the units are shown. These units are a little bit unique in that their driveways are long, so there, there's ample room to bring the vehicles there and get them off the street. So, it's kind of, it's a little bit of a unique design that developers come up with. Again, there are 29 that are townhomes. So, those would be the ones that are three plaques or three units together. And then, the other ones are, what I would call duplexes, are two units, but each is fully sprinkled. Next slide, please. This is the open space configuration. Under a tentative subdivision map, we're required to demonstrate that there is 25% open space available, and the green areas compute out. And if we were to zoom in, or maybe you can see it on your, the package that you have, that we've achieved that requirement, this slide just demonstrates that for you. And it does not include either the driveways, nor does it include the residents, of course, nor does it include the individual driveways or the driveway around. So, with that, next slide. Again, 25% open space is required. That would equate, in this particular project site, to 48,460 square feet. We have about 48,653. So, doesn't make it by a lot, but it does make it. It, this site does allow 16 units per acre, which would give us up to 71 if we could achieve the other criteria, which, this is a classic property to demonstrate how hard it is to make a 16-unit-per-acre density that's allowed in Douglas County Code. It just, as somebody who's been doing this for a while in the community, it is very hard to get to 16 units per acre and meet all the other requirements. You have to go up, and then, there are height restrictions that further restrict it. So, I don't recall a single property in Douglas County making that. In Carson Valley in particular, there might be some at Tahoe that meet that 16 units per acre. It's just, the other constraints just don't allow for it. Nevertheless, we would be allowed up to 71. However, we propose, as I've said before, 29 units on the site, which is about six and a half units per acre. There's a population calculation, but go ahead and move on. This is the Fire Code reference that I spoke to earlier that allows for more than 20 units in the event that each of the units is sprinkled. Next slide. Again, another Fire Code reference here from Douglas County Code, or actually from the Fire Code itself. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission that you might have.
Bryce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kate, would it be an accurate statement to suggest that, given the current zoning of multifamily residential, that there's really only two options here, either apartments or townhomes?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
I guess it bothers me a little bit about not having a secondary access. My sister-in-law was trapped in paradise if my brother didn't know this little road out of town, the back way. I don't know if we still have her. I get it, and I'm really happy about the fire sprinklers. I think that's a great thing. What I was wondering is, if you could put up the map again? If that, so I take it the loop road, and then, on the other side of the fence, because I did visit the property, is the one that goes behind the school.
Correct.
How about something as simple as a gate that either the fire department or the sheriff could open? That would allow people in an emergency, hopefully, an emergency that never happens, to simply open a gate and get cars out that way if there was a sudden reason. There are other reasons besides fires where sometimes there has to be evacuations. I live in a community where the sheriff serving a search warrant, found dangerous chemicals in a garage, and evacuated an area very quickly. And that's what kind of thing concerns me. Again, you hope the whole life of the project never have to open that gate? But would that be something that could be considered? That simply put, in that kind of emergency, that gate could be opened by, again, the sheriff for the, or East Fork Fire, and cars can either back it back to Giles or get out through the, through the school parking lot? I know, I drove that way yesterday, so.
Yeah, you drove through the school there?
I did, and probably not supposed to, but I wanted to see.
I don't know whether you're supposed to or not, but. The, so, there's no gate proposed, there's a gate where you, the school district has a gate there to restrict access to their property. Obviously, it's open when they're, we've got buses coming and going, and perhaps even parents. We did, early on in the, as we started considering this plan, we did consider going to the school district. If you might recall, this was a couple of years ago, two, three years ago, school district had itself kind of embroiled in some other subjects. So, we did not actually pursue a specific request to the school board at that time. They were, seemed like they had their hands full, so didn't, something like this didn't seem to be ripe for consideration, if you will. We certainly have no objection to a gate. It would have to be approved by the school district, though. If, Jim, if that is the direction you had intended.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Just be something, again, if, whichever, the East Fork Fire, the sheriff could literally just say, "Hey, we need to get this empty now."
Sure.
Open a gate and bring it through the school parking lot. And not, again, ever to be used for anything but an emergency. But I feel a lot more comfortable without having a secondary access. There is something that you could do in an emergency, and if the applicant would consider addressing that with the school board.
So, I think I can represent for the applicant that we'd be happy to approach the school district to request an emergency gate. As long as you don't condition it that I have to have it, because we don't have any control over private, another party's property. But if you were to impose a condition that required us to go do that, I'm happy to enjoy a good relationship with this, the administrative staff at the school district, and I think I could get that done for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rob. Other questions? Dan?
You'll have to forgive me. I'm a retired engineer, so some of my questions may be nitpicky.
No, no, you're good.
It looks like your driveway entrance, you need to get an easement from the school district because of the way that tapers into your property.
So, the reason that tapers the way it does, Mr. St. John, is that is intended to be the new pavement. So, the pavement in the school district is to the south and west of that already exists. And the easement already exists, all the way to where the vertical line is.
Yeah.
Did you see?
I was just curious about that.
Sure, no, that's good.
I think I found the answer, but you are required to build the pedestrian connector going to the west. Is that what my understanding is?
No.
There's a pedestrian?
So, we proposed that at the time of the design review, and the recommendation, is it, did it end up being required?
Well, there's a condition 6F.
Yeah, we had a, yes, you're right.
6F.
I'm sorry, I'm getting older, Mr. St. John, but we had a pipe, actually, that went out of the storm drain, so it would be a detention basin, and that was summarily dismissed by the Town of Gardnaville.
Well, the reason I bring it up is because when I visited the site, it was obvious to me that the community is using that parcel to cut across. I mean, there's bike traffic, there's pedestrian traffic that's already using, you know, to get from the east side to the west side of the property.
You think that, is that trespassing? I don't think my client.
It's Nevada. Open space, no fences, remember?
No fences, yeah.
Anyway, so my, that's why I was interested, to make sure that there would be a pedestrian public access to get through to the west.
Yeah, not pub, I don't think it's public. I believe it's an access from these residents to that, but I don't think they intend to have public access through there.
Okay, so I guess my question is, what are you going to do with the existing traffic? The existing traffic that uses that today is going to be cut off? Are you saying you're going to cut them off?
I think that's kind of the plan.
Well, how do you do that?
Now, excuse me, let me say this. Santa Inez has not specifically told me that. They, I don't think they want the public walking through the private development to get to that park.
But it's not gated.
It's not gated.
And the public, it is a private, well, it, the public has a right to drive through there if they're visiting somebody, so you can't exclude the public.
You can exclude the public. So, if you were coming to visit, you would always be welcome, of course, but you would.
Maybe not after these questions.
No, no, you're fine. But I don't know that I could come if I knew you, and you lived there, and I came and parked in front of your home, and then continued and walked across the rest of the property and into the, to the public way that is in the Town of Gardnaville. So, I'm not sure that that is consistent with the intent.
Well, I'm just concerned anytime that public access that exists gets cut off without consideration.
Well, it doesn't exist, though. So, while it, physically, people are using it, there's no public access through there today.
There's no legal public easement for people to pass through there. Are you doing anything special for the special hazards? Are you doing anything special for the, the special hazards zone, the flood zone?
We are outside the special flood hazard zone.
Oh, you are? I thought, I read that you were in it.
No, it immediately abuts it to the west, but.
I was just curious as to if that was affecting your, your project at all. I noticed that your will serve letter from Gardenville Water expired in 2023. Is that a problem?
It is not. They will, so it's part of, Gardenville Water Company has a place of use map that's on file with the state engineer's office. This property is within it, and I believe the property is annexed. So I don't think there's any, is it annexed? I can't remember.
So Kate Morales O'Neil, for the record, that is correct. It will be annexed. You will need to do that prior to SIP and final map. But that, the expiration, like you said, the land use, it was already approved, so there is, they're fine with.
Like I said, I can be a little nitpicky.
No, that's okay. Good question.
There was, there was a comment in here about how you're handling the garbage.
Yes.
And I've been around public works enough in my career to know that one of the big problems with recycling in multifamily is that there is no space provided for recycling.
Correct.
Are you doing anything to help that situation with this project?
No.
Okay, so you're not promoting recycling, people just have to throw out their recycle?
Correct.
Or take it themselves?
Yes.
And that's not, obviously not a requirement of the county or the towns. Okay, good to know. And same thing, question with water, or energy conservation. Anything that the developer is doing to enhance energy conservation, electrification, reduced gas use, that kind of stuff?
Nothing beyond what is required by the international codes in Douglas County Code relative to energy.
Okay, so nothing special there?
Nothing special.
All right, I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Mr. St. John, your name is familiar to me. Remind me.
It should be.
Yes. Where did you work at?
I, I've been around.
Very good. I look forward to visiting.
The way I answer that is I was a public works director somewhere the last 25 years of my career.
Oh, somewhere.
Somewhere.
Okay, we need to move this along. You guys can catch up outside. Lori.
Any other questions?
Yes, I, I have some serious issues about the access as well. I believe that this interface with the school, we have a school driveway.
Hold on, Lori. Dan, can you turn off your microphone, please?
Okay, we've got the school driveway, we've got a fence, we've got the other driveway, we've got a shared access point with buses coming in and out, and parents dropping their children off, and people trying to get out of there to go to work. I know that the code authorizes additional units beyond the 20 off of one drive aisle, but I don't believe it guarantees it. And I just feel like this is over intensifying this, this site, given the constraints on the access. I don't know if any additional work can be done with the school district to try to resolve some of those interface issues. I, I would not want to live in one of those units facing the school. You've got this big driveway, probably have the chain link fence remaining, or some other type of fence, and then another driveway. To me, this is just an accident waiting to occur at this, this choke point. So has there any, has any other design been considered for accessing this property?
Yes.
Could you share that information?
Sure. We, again, as I related to Mr. McCallum, we, early on in the project, we considered going to the school district and often, or excuse me, discussing building it as a shared access for the full distance there that you see. However, because of those circumstances that I described earlier with respect to the school board and all that they had at their, on their plate at the time, that became, or our perception was that was not a feasible alternative. As a result, we went and continued with this design. So this design achieves it all onsite. If there were an ability to do more with the school district, perhaps that's a, that is another alternative. Again, we did look at that early on, Lori, and then dismissed it as not feasible due to the political conditions that existed.
Well, since those conditions have changed, I think it's prudent to maybe reexamine that. I certainly can't support this design. I think it's ill-conceived.
Thank you.
Other questions? Paul.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to make sure that I understand, as I read the report of Wilson Engineers, that there is one parking space, which is obviously owned and part of each parcel, outside of the garage.
Yes.
And then there are two, as I understand, within the garage?
Yes.
Are they tandem?
No, I, well, they might be. I don't recall specifically.
I didn't see the width when I tried to extrapolate, and I know it's not scaled, and frankly.
It might be scaled, but it should be just scaled.
It's not scaled for, for a layperson to be able to tell you exactly how many feet, but I couldn't see how you could get two cars in the building plus one. And then I recognize that you have provisions for four on the top and six on the bottom, which is part of your open space 25%, which I find interesting because they're parking spaces. And those were for mobile homes, as I understood from the report. Mobile home parking.
No.
RV, sorry. I didn't mean mobile home.
Four RV spaces. There are four RV spaces.
Okay, the RV spaces, the ones up by the pond?
Yes.
Okay. Am I also correct that all of those spaces are available for guests of the entirety of the group of the subdivision, plus the spaces at the bottom, such that the only order that can be brought to the use of those spaces to avoid storage of cars and things of this nature will have to be the homeowners association? So we kind of give that to them?
Correct.
Okay. If you or someone could help me with the parking of the three per parcel, it helps my situation. You follow what I mean? I just added the units.
I don't have the design, the elevations, that was part of the design review applications. But there, it's certain width, it's 20 feet width of the garage, and we looked at it at the, it's just off the top of my head, I can't remember. The width of the garage does support the two and the turning radius. Those are all things that we look at in order to fit the two in the garage.
And it's, and it's not a surprise that I couldn't do that calculation.
No, that's okay. And I, I know it's 20 feet typically for single car garage, and I just can't think what it is for the, the double.
All right, and my last question, which may not be our concern here, but it is going to be a concern, as, as my colleague on the commission indicated, that there is egress and, and traversing of a piece of property which is currently the homeowners association, or will be, anticipated to be the homeowners association. And I now ask, I apologize, our district attorney, in Nevada, can an entity such as a homeowners association suffer a prescriptive easement by individuals who may not be associated with the subdivision with the use of the property such that it becomes permanent?
AJ Hames from the DA's office, for the record. I don't think there would be any reason why the HOA would be treated differently than any other entity.
Well, then, I'm concerned that you have no access or egress for the public, as you've indicated to my colleague. You have actual use based on observation, so that you don't have, you haven't prevented them from using it. It probably has continued over a period of five years. Is it our concern whether there is a lawsuit that arises out of the access and the ingress to a subdivision such as this, that we have to consider it or just hand it off?
AJ Hames, again, for the record. I don't believe that would be something that we would need to concern ourselves with now, because that would be a lawsuit that would arise between private parties, whoever claims ownership of a supposed prescriptive easement, and then the HOA. And it would be up to them to resolve that dispute.
That actually gives me a little bit of comfort as the planning commission in the county, but it should concern the engineer and the owner.
Don't think that has, that subject has not come up in my discussions with the client, but I'll be sure to raise it.
It, it becomes a difficulty, because you, when you pass title, you might have to disclose that potential.
Yeah, the, the regulations with respect to prescription are pretty, pretty discreet. And there are certain things, you, you got to, the person who's claiming prescription, at least as I understand it from an engineering perspective, is you've got to be able to demonstrate, the person who's claiming it's got to be able to demonstrate, you know, a consistent use. It has to be, you know, in cases that I have been involved in, in one fashion or another as an expert, you have to have a consistent use. It has to be open and notorious. It, there's, there's a whole bunch of them, and then the thresholds are relatively high.
No, you're, you're correct. The open, notorious, it can, it doesn't have to be continuous, but it has to be consistent, even if it's over a period of time. It has to be for the entire, it has to be for the entirety of the period.
The prescription only vests to the point, to the extent that you've used it. So if somebody used it once a week, or once in every six months, that's the only right that they would have. But never here, neither here nor there. I think counsel's advice is best, and we will, we will address it directly.
I'm just, I have my concerns.
I appreciate your concern.
I am not licensed in Nevada. California, Texas, yes.
Yes, good.
But not Nevada.
Not Nevada.
Kirk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of observations and then a couple of questions, Rob, that you could answer, or Kate, if you need to weigh in. First of all, I do like the, the open space layout. I think that's very good. I think that's an attractive feature of this type of a design. I do like the Martin-Sloo connection. I think that's a valuable asset for everyone. The couple of questions and observations. One, the street, the private drive, that'll be two ways, right?
Yes.
So in the event of an emergency, people can go left, or people can go right out of their driveways and get to the access point. It's not like you'll be backing up all the way around, having to go in one direction.
You're correct.
Okay. And then sidewalks, or I haven't had the privilege of looking at the design review. Is there anticipated sidewalks? There's not probably going to be a lot of pedestrian traffic in the neighborhood, except people walking their dogs, maybe, but.
Mr. Wilder, I apologize. I should have, as Kate related briefly a few moments ago, I should have looked a little more closely at the design review to be able to answer some of these specific questions. And to all the commissioners, I apologize, because I prepared it in such a way that I was dealing with the ownership issue. I believe, there are sidewalks. I can't recall, Kirk, as I stand here, whether it's around both sides of the street, but there are sidewalks.
Thank you. I think, Kate, you probably recognize, and Rob as well, when you go to the board, it would probably be valuable to have some of the design review information graphically or enunciated, so that the board can have a clear picture of what you're doing. And then I, I do think Jim made a very good point, and my other colleagues have also addressed the issue, that the chain link fence, I did go out and, and tour the area, so I'm familiar with the, the way it lays out from all different angles. I drove around a couple of times. But the chain link fence, I think Jim makes a very good observation, and that's worth pursuing on your end with the school district, so that there would be access. But I do think the chain link fence is kind of an important feature for protection of the school and the community. I don't know that you want to have the community going through the school, or the school kids going through the community. And I guess I, I would observe in, in the event of probably a serious matter, if you got to go out the access point, and if the Chichester neighborhood is backed up, you can turn around and go through the school, if, if you even don't have a, a secondary access from that. You can make a U-turn and go out to the Chichester and pull around. I think you're only going to have a limited number of vehicles probably in the community at one point. If you've got 29 units, it's not like there's going to be 100 cars there that are going to have to, to leave the facility at one time.
Correct.
So I, you are constrained by the, the measurements of the land, and I think Bryce made that point at the start of when we were asking questions. So you have done your best. It's a, it's a project that I think does meet all of the findings, but I look forward to you providing further information, if necessary, to the, to the board.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not into beating a dead horse, but I do want to just address a couple things here. Kate, is it true that there is a design review that's approved currently, and that that's not before us today or not within our purview?
Kate Morales O'Neil, for the record, yes. And I apologize, again, the design review was already approved, and with that application you need to send, you do the, the elevations, the sidewalks, all of that. A tentative subdivision map doesn't require elevations, so it was always al, already approved. But a good thing to include, I think, in the future, just for informative, like you said, for various questions, because it's been so long since I really looked at that in particular, those items that, like the width of the garage, I'm like, well, we wouldn't have approved it. I can't remember what, it was in 2023, so. But point well taken, I just think for informative, it'd be good to include those documents as a reference moving forward, but they are not required for, for a tentative subdivision map application. And yes, the, the design review was approved, and let me give a little background and clarity. The original design review was based on more than 20 units. And at the time, our design criteria manual, not code, but our design criteria, said 20 units or more needed secondary access. The, the, this tentative subdivision map hadn't come forward. So at that time, if they had brought it forward, I don't think it would have been approved by the planning commission or the Board of County Commissioners at that time, based on the design criteria and what it said. However, in January of 2024, the Board of County Commissioners did approve the resolution that includes if it's less than 40 units and the units are sprinkled, sprinkled, a secondary access is not required. So that trumps the design criteria. So that is what code states now. So just keeping in mind, you know, Ms. Lyle, just, I know, as far as secondary access, we just have to go by what code says, and that resolution was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, adopting the International Fire Code Regulations, which states if they are sprinkled and it's 40 units or less, a secondary access is not required.
Thank you, Kate. That was going to be my second point, that although I may not necessarily like the fact that a secondary access isn't there, once again, it's not required by code, and therefore cannot be mandated by this body. Furthermore, if, if we look at the configuration of this particular property, there's no way to provide access to the east, because you're not going to go into Chichester. There's no way to provide secondary access to the north, because you're not going to go through the public facilities. And so the, this, it leaves basically access into the school, which would have to be agreed upon. And honestly, it opens up a whole nother can of worms in terms of safety and, and all kinds of other things. So, one, it's not required by code, and two, it may not even be feasible to do it based on, on this particular piece of property. And then my, my third point is, as I mentioned earlier, there's really two options for this particular piece of property based on the zoning. One is to build single-story townhomes, or one is to build multi-story for rent apartments with a certain density and, and unit count based on parking and all kinds of other things. And so, you know, for me, not only does it meet the findings, but it, it's really the best of the two options available for this particular use of property in the way that it's zoned and master planned, et cetera. So although there may be concerns, I don't see anything in the findings that would allow me to, to deny this application.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, but they can wait till after public comment.
Okay.
I will open this.
May I make one comment to Kate?
Can it wait until after?
I just wanted to thank you and say that I apologize that I tried to scale this thing.
No, I'm glad you did, because, you know, you learn something new all the time, and just having these other documents available, not only for my reference, but it enables me to be able to answer your questions more thoroughly, than having to sit here and think, now, what did those documents look like three, two years ago now?
Thank you.
Wait until after public comment?
Just a real quick clarification, I'm pretty sure I heard we're talking single-story townhouses? And anything in our approval would restrict it to single-story, because I think that would address a lot of these comments we got from the public.
That is what the design rep, the elevations that we approved were all one-story, so they couldn't, in order for that to change, they'd have to come back with a modification. And again, that's not something that, you know, you know, we would look at, the one-story seems compatible, and we don't want to block anyone's views.
And I agree with what Bryce said on that. It does say in Condition 6C, that it is a 26-foot pavement with four feet of sidewalk on both sides.
Thank you.
So that's stated in the report.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, I would like to open this for a public comment. Speakers, please come to the microphone one at a time and sign the roster.
Good afternoon, Jeff Semenar, I already signed in. I just want to make a couple of comments about, it sounds like you, as a board, probably have to approve this based on some of the criteria that's established, but we need to not forget about common sense. The fires in Los Angeles with multimillion-dollar homes, I'd venture to guess a lot of those had sprinklers, and sprinklers don't work when your house is on fire on the outside, only if it starts on the inside, so that it might be a moot point. But I want to, in my 25 years of living and working here, I can tell you from the sheriff's office standpoint, which I retired from, that speeding vehicles is our number-one complaint throughout the county. And I'm not sure if a traffic study was done, but 29 residents, probably going to have three cars per, people that live in Chichester make frequent trips to the various services that are nearby, so three, four, five trips a day, times two, three cars, that adds up. The streets in Chichester are already in horrible shape, and people speed relentlessly through there. This is the second development that's trying to squeeze our neighborhood to have an access point, so they can make their money. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, because you probably have to approve this, but it's going to be a pretty bad day when a kid from that school gets hit by a car from someone that was late to work. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there another speaker? Please come to the microphone and sign the roster, state your name for the record.
Marsha Williams, I live on Edelsboro. Okay, some of my questions have already been answered, but I did have a question on this drawing, it looks like there are slanted lines on the back of all the exterior lots, is that a backyard? Yes? Yes?
Your questions will be answered after your time is up. When we close public comment, your questions will be answered.
Oh, okay. Second one, it looks like the development is taking most of Giles in the beginning, and then it's tapering off into the road through the development. The only adjacent road to Giles is Marion Russell. So during the development of the project, you're going to have construction equipment going in and out of there until the project is done. After that, you're going to have a minimum of probably 29 cars going in and out of, just off of Marion Russell to get to Giles, to get to the development. So I'm just, I think the traffic on Marion Russell is going to be a problem, and that's all I had to say.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Try to do this quickly. My name is Nova Cook, I live on Chichester Drive now, I have a fourth grader and a fifth grader at GES, I pick them up at the back of the school every day. It is scary right now, there are no crosswalks, there is one, either teacher's aide, or whoever can field it for that day, that helps the kids across the current easement that goes by the school field. I have no idea how they're going to widen that, I see the angle, my dad was a carpenter and a contractor, I've been in landscape construction for 25 years myself, when I saw this go up, I was appalled. I have friends that live in that corner lot to the north, they heard about it last year, they thought it had went away, I'm very surprised that it is approved. Sorry, I'll try to get through these, and townhome definition, I looked up, it does say multi-story, you guys are saying this is one-story with shared walls, to pack that many humans and that many cars in that lot that I walk my dog across is crazy, and again, it's been brought up, to only have one exit point on Marion Russell where people are already speeding, it's 15 in there, there's people going 35, 40 all the time, it's a problem. Besides money to be made, what's the benefit? Affordable housing, the other development, Martin Slough, those places are going for 400 to 500 right now. That's, I've been here two years, I can barely cross Gilman with my dog these days, because there is so much new traffic, not just from those two-story condos that have been built, but from that other area back there with Hayborn, it's definitely changed. You know, my sister's been up here 10 years in Chichester, I understand the price of progress, my grandmother lived in Fletcher Hills in San Diego, that was once a rural nice area, three freeways later, the trolley, it's ruined, it's a horrible, it's getting to be a horrible area. Sorry, the property values of all the folks that live there, I feel very bad for them, they've been there probably 20 years, and I would not want 10, 29 condos behind my house. I thought, when I saw the flow chart, that this was the pre-app stage, to hear that it is potentially approved makes me really sad, and think about my, am I three minutes up? Oh, okay. I'm bringing this to the PTA on the 13th, the people that I talked to yesterday at the back of the school had no idea, so I hope more people will attend these meetings, and yeah, I'd rather see it be a park personally, I think that'd be way safer, so, thank you all.
Thank you.
My name is Beth Heinowski, I serve as president of the Chichester Estates Property Owners Association. I've had some of the same concerns that have already been raised. Kate, can you pull up this map? Thank you. We also, back two years ago, suggested that the developer get in touch with the school district and try to get some emergency access, I'm very disappointed to find out that was never followed through. Chichester Estates will not absorb this HOA, we will not have any part of it, so that is out of the question. The town of Gardinerville approval includes damage to the town's existing infrastructure, something needs to be put in there about damage to existing fencing and properties in Chichester. And if you look at this map, down here in the corner, this has always been a concern about the tapering, and the tapering never seems to come off these maps. The tapering of the street from Giles Avenue into the ingress of the development, it makes it narrower with the school buses and the children, and we want it wider, so unless that is fully straightened out, that little curve on the line, I think there's going to be a lot of concern in not just Chichester, but all the parents at the school that pick up their kids. I would also like to recommend in future that we not just approve a single-story elevation, we've had developments come before, and then we had to go back and talk about, well, can they build second stories here or not? Because people didn't understand that the elevation wasn't approved as it was. I think it needs to be put in the text, that it is a single story, and that is what is approved, and that would eliminate a lot of these comments that I saw from some of our residents online. And I guess that's all, because everybody else has already covered everything I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments?
Well, good afternoon, I'm Clarence Brewer, I own F. Heisel and livestock company. We have, could you put the map back? Yeah, we just, oh, that's okay. We have a house right around where Wilson is, by the grammar school, and the late Bob Chichester and I were good friends, and he convinced me to buy this house, it'd been built by the builder, and he said it'll be quiet, you won't have any problems there. Well, you only have one entrance way in there, and I, at one time, got in a jam, and so I was going to put a subdivision in, but I had to have a double entrance, you didn't have a single entrance. And this is only, another thing is, I got stuck with Rocky Terrace, beautiful, it's a beautiful subdivision, but the water, I have to take it off through my irrigation system in the rocky slough, and there's no detention pond, and I don't see any detention pond. Mr. DA, don't we still have to have a detention pond? Is there one on there? Where is it? Okay, so there is a detention pond then? Okay, and what does that run into the, there are dits there then?
Jeremy, there's a question for you.
Okay. When I was our farm bureau president, we got down where you only could have five houses to an acre, and your infrastructure is had in this county, there shouldn't be any more building until you get your infrastructure in there. Another thing is, they've just put on our ag wells a meter, if they're going to put a meter on our irrigation system coming next, because the decree was built on waste, it was built on conserving the water, it had nothing to do with subdivisions, but we are in the minority here in agriculture, and they're pushing, your developers are pushing to get that water, right now, we own the water for agriculture, but they're getting where they can vote, and we have no vote any longer, not in the county, but alone in the state of Nevada for agriculture. And you like the open space, and our kids don't want to come back on these ranches, they don't want to work, and we've got to keep the open space, because I think that's our number-one priority in this county, is the open space, it draws the people in here. But we also got to keep the open space, and A for agriculture, first the alphabet, and the planning department here, we're bound down to Z. And I have a couple problems, I had interviews next door, build a road, and it's only supposed to be six inches, and it's 18 inches, and the planning division went out there and looked at it and approved it. And you have to start looking at the overall picture for agriculture and help us out if we need some help there.
Thank you, Mr. Burr.
We need somebody in the planning division that's been on a ranch or a farm, let's get the practability back into it. So thank you, and let's look at our infrastructure people, because you're out of water, believe it or not, it's, the water is not all that great in this valley, as long as agriculture is running their water to in the wintertime for their livestock, it's filling up the aquifer. Barry Pencil, his last thing, he did, he wanted $100,000 to study the groundwater, and that was the first thing when he went off the board.
Thank you, Mr. Burr.
And we need to do that, because you don't have all the water that you think you have. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker? I'll close public comment. Sir, you wanted to speak?
My name is Dan Howard, and the entry to this, the open space here on this map, I walk by every day when I walk my dog in the morning, and I can tell you, there is sidewalks on both sides of the street, and both of those houses, if they have visitors, and they're parking on the street, a bus that comes through, you don't have any room for anything else, it's tight. So that's a concern of mine, that you're going to have congestion, you're going to have traffic blockage. The other thing is that, the open lot there, there was mention that, about public access to that property, and that, the kids that go through there every morning, they go to school, I walk through there, and there's probably, I'd say, six or seven, maybe 10, maybe a dozen kids that walk through there every morning, they go to school and walk back after school. So now, all the traffic's going to be diverted, so they're either going to have to go down to Lampy and go up and come back to school, or they're going to have to go the other direction, go around to walk to school. So then I have safety concerns that all these kids now are going to be walking into traffic, so I don't know if there's been a lot of thought into this single access, I think it's just dangerous, and we're just asking for catastrophe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Then I will close public comment and bring discussion back to the planning commission. Rob? Yes, please?
Answer a couple of questions.
You have a lot of comments.
Yes, I try to take copious notes, but if I missed one, I trust, Madam Chairman, you'll remind me. So I'll just start with Jeff's comments regarding, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name down, with respect to the fires in LA, I'm certainly sympathetic to that, and I understand that that will be ever, ever before us. The speeding issue is honestly something that sheriff has to deal with, that certainly my client nor the code has any ability to deal with it beyond what is already available within it. With respect to the traffic study question, this, there is a threshold in Douglas County Code that dictates when we, when the estimated traffic meets a certain level, then a traffic study is required. This project does not meet that threshold, and therefore there was not a traffic study performed. The, Ms. Williams asked the question about, or expressed a concern about Marion Russell traffic, again, I, we don't meet the threshold to dictate the need for an additional traffic study. The slanted lines that you saw in the backyards are in fact private, exclusive-use areas for those homeowners, so that is in fact accurate, your assessment of what those were. Ms. Cook raised some questions about the townhomes, some speeding issues again, then that she prefers a park, and then questioned the benefit of the project. The project certainly is private property, and as we know, here in Nevada, we enjoy private property rights, we as a community, this planning commission, the county commissioners have planned property, planned development, and dictated where it would go. And one of the early presentations, or earlier comments that I had made during the presentation was that we meet those current planning documents. Mr. Burr raised it again about protection of agriculture, that is what the master plan attempted to do. That is what the master plan attempted to do, is protect agriculture, but provide for private property rights. And this, this is a landowner with private property rights, with zoning, with the master plan designation. And if they meet the code, it's my estimation that they should be allowed to proceed. Beth related some concerns about the narrow access. Again, it's, it's unfortunate the way we've diagrammed this because it's, it has apparently introduced some confusion. There is not a reduction in the width at Giles Lane. That, there is an existing access road. Anybody that's been there knows how, or can see how the school district uses it. They're working on their portion of that reciprocal access easement that was granted again in the early 90s. And that pavement is not being removed, is not changing. That we are in fact, as I mentioned in an earlier remark, widening it out. So, it will be a full width back to that first intersection of the driveway. So, there is not a reduction as the exhibit apparently implies. And then with respect, Mr. Burr, I have a great deal of respect for Clarence and his knowledge and understanding of, of water in Douglas County and irrigation practice historically. Certainly, um, somebody who, who does that, or who knows that intimately and has lived it, um, for I suspect more than 50 years. However, having said that, there are just two, there are two recent studies relative to groundwater. There's the DRI study that was funded by Gardinerville Ranchos General Improvement District and indicates, as I understand it from one of their board members as recently as yesterday, that they have the capacity to serve another 1,400 homes in Gardinerville Ranchos, which the project that Clarence related to, Rocky Terrace, is within that, that development. Additionally, Douglas County just recently received the USGS, uh, USGS report on the groundwater basin. And while there's trending of water declines in the Johnson Lane area, which for the 40-plus years that I have practiced in this community, that has always been a concern, is declining water levels out in Johnson Lane. The nitrate levels and the arsenic levels there perhaps are growing, but for Carson Valley, that's not the case. This property is served by Gardinerville Water Company. They have had and continue to have groundwater rights appropriated by the State Engineers' Office for this type of development. And they have the proven pumping capacity, which is, that particular water company is regulated by the Nevada, uh, excuse me, the Public Utility Commission of Nevada, and they regulate it each time we annex a piece of property to it. They, they review it, confirm it, and they have to demonstrate their capacity, which will occur in this project as well. So, in all due respect to the, the water concerns, I think we are adequately protected for this particular use at this particular site. Madam Chairman, that is, um, the, the bulk of the, um, the comments that I made notations of. If you have others, I'm happy to do my best to address them.
Okay, Marth, Marcia Williams was concerned about construction equipment and the traversing of Marion Russell.
Um, there, uh, there's no prohibition about construction equipment used in public access roads. She is right, or whomever, maybe it was Beth with the homeowners association. Those roads, the pavement section that we used when we, when those roads were designed in construction, the pavement type was what we called an AC-20P. It had polymer asphalt. The AC-20P asphalt, unfortunately, you know, while we specified it in Douglas County for years, we found that it would block crack. So, when you drive down the road and you, any one of these streets and you hear that clunk, 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 there's about a two-inch block crack. That is a result of the pavement mix design that we used in the 80s and the early 90s. We went away from that, but that, when people look at those streets and they say they're terrible, the infrastructure's failed, it's unfortunate, but that is a result of the AC, the type of AC pavement that we used in that particular period of time in Douglas County. We've since gone away from it and the streets, I think, are, will endure and last a much greater period of time going forward. But, um, the infrastructure actually in this community is very, very strong, in my opinion. You know, the streets, Town of Gardinerville in particular, Town of Minnan do a great job maintaining their street. Gardinerville Ranchos spends a lot of money each year maintaining their streets, taking care of their water system. Sewer District does a great job.
And I do notice that the Town of Gardinerville has one of their conditions, that any damage to their infrastructure has to be repaired. And also, Beth expressed, I take it, a tad frustration because the HOA in Chichester will have no say over this subdivision.
That's correct.
I wanted to acknowledge that.
We diannexed it. We don't want any say.
Okay, well, you will have no say over it. Be assured. And, let's see, my questions, my couple of questions were, in the Town of Gardinerville meeting, they had a comment about the sidewalk and the width of the sidewalk and ADA requirements being either five foot or four feet with a pass around every 200 feet.
Correct.
So, will that be addressed with further design review or how will you address that?
We, um, I did speak to the client afterwards. We will address that in the improvement plans that come forward as part of the design review and ultimately, well, they'll come forward with the design review, the site improvement permit. We'll show, we'll demonstrate that.
Okay, and then is there, I don't know, Kate can answer this, if you can answer this, or if Jeremy has to answer this. The different standards for a driveway? Because this says it's a private driveway or a private road? Are there different standards, construction standards?
No. Well, um, this is just my professional opinion. These roads are, these, it's labeled as a driveway, um, but it will be constructed to the standard rural, or excuse me, standard suburban road thickness relative to, for structural purposes. So, they will be designed to the public street standards, but it will be privately maintained.
How wide will it be?
26 feet.
Okay. And with the engineering conditions on page 81, under 6C, it says the private driveway slash drive aisle will have a 26-foot width pavement with a rolled curb on each side and a four-foot sidewalk on each side. If we have that condition that says a four-foot sidewalk and that's going to be readdressed, will that condition have to change? And also, it's my understanding that the street sweeper and the snowplows prefer a squared curb. Does our code only allow rolled curbs? Why do we do rolled curbs when the squared curbs seem to work better? And people don't drive up on squared curbs like they do on the rolled curbs?
If I could, I'll take first stab. Mr. Hutchings, I'd, I'd love to hear your answer on this. But I would tell you, the roll curbs are used because in many instances, we don't know where the driveways are going to be, we as design engineers and design professionals. And so, you look at the subdivisions in Carson Valley, that is why roll curbs are used. And they work well. And so, um, there's, uh, there's no reason they can't be used. The difficulty with the L-type curb is you, you've got to know where the driveway is going to be, otherwise you're going to cut that roll, or that L-curb every time you go to put one in. So, that's the difference and the distinction. Roll curbs have been used in Carson Valley for the full 40 years that I've been here.
I'm just always dodging cars when I'm walking on sidewalk.
Oh, yes.
That's one of my big issues.
Yep, I understand completely.
Jeremy, you want to talk about the sidewalk condition? Please.
Uh, yeah, Jeremy Hutchings for the record. So, I understand that, Rob, you're agreeing to a wider sidewalk than four? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, no. We, we were presented the alternative. So, Ms. Casey, after the meeting, I met with my clients about whether we do five-foot wide sidewalks or we do fours. The, the difficulty is, is we're constrained, right? And so, while the drawing shows four footers, I, I suspect that's what we will end up doing, four footers with a step out every 200 feet pursuant to the ADA requirements. If you did fi, if I agreed to five, all of a sudden I've lost two feet of open space and it's going to, it's going to constrain the project, so.
I just want to make sure it's consistent between what you're saying and what it shows in our conditions.
I think it is, actually. The, your four feet.
It says four feet, but it doesn't say the 200.
It, it does not.
Foot pass-through. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
And I think we could address that in the improvement plans. Is that a way to say? I, I think staff's acceptable to that.
Are there other questions? Comments? Motion?
Oh, one comment.
Kate.
Um, thank you, Chairwoman Casey. I, I do think, um, also since Rob agreed, again, it's not based on the approval, but I think within the motion requesting that the applicant approach the school board, again, that's not based on the school board saying yes, but that, um, that request be made to the school board on behalf of the applicant, again, that doesn't mean that if the school board says no, the project goes away, but just that they request that they do that, I think is fair, relevant.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
I move that the project be approved in that it meets the findings of fact. Did I say it right?
Dan, the motion is on page 73.
Oh.
Of the packet.
Okay, okay. Uh, recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve tentative subdivision map application, DP 24 hyphen 0253, as presented because of the fi, required findings have been met and request that the applicant approach the school district and request a gate at the appropriate place to, to give somewhat of a emergency access. And, uh, request that staff clarifies the, the comment on the four-foot sideways walk and makes it consistent with what the Town of Gardinerville said in their findings. Just your, your point about consistency. Thank you.
I would second that.
AJ, do you have that?
Yeah, as I understand the motion, it was a motion to approve the tentative map subject to the conditions set forth in the staff report with two added conditions, or at least, well, one added condition, that the applicant contact the school board to see whether an emergency access can be provided. And then, not an additional condition, but a clarification, a request that staff work to draft the conditions so that they're consistent with the Town of Gardinerville's proposed condition on the sidewalks.
Uh, I, I just have a question. If the, this is for the, the DA's office, if the school board does not grant permission, we're only asking that they, they approach them. We're not asking that, that that actually is done. Because I don't want to condition the approval of this tentative subdivision map on their approval.
Correct. As I understand the, the intent of the, the condition, it was to require secondary access only if the school board is agreeable and allows for it. So, if the school board rejects the proposal, then it would not be a requirement.
That's, that's not my understanding. Excuse me. And I'll do second, AJ. My understanding was for Mr. McCallup during that discussion, is that we would approach them to request a gate to allow emergency access by, in the event that either fire or any public safety official required it, to open up a gate so quicker, we could get quicker access. That my client is agreeable to.
But that, that gate would only be required if the school district allowed.
Correct.
Yeah.
But it's not secondary access per se, it's just a gate.
Right.
Right? Just a gate, yes. And then I'm agreeable to it. Thank you for the clarification.
You good with that?
Yes, I'm good with that. I just, I, I'm glad Mr. Anderson brought that up because I was just, I just don't want to condition it on that that is a secondary access. It is just for emergency if the school agrees to it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I just wanted to clarify my position. I believe that the, the access point, I realize there's only one, but I believe that that design is going to be detrimental to the community and to the school in the long run. So, that's my, why I voted no on this. I believe the finding for number four, or number three, rather, that the public facilities are appropriate for the transportation facilities is, cannot be met. So, that's why I voted no.
Vote passes six to one. Lori voting no.
Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you.
We'll afford to visit with you sometime.
And that concludes our agenda for today. Item four on the VHSR's will not be held. And I would like to remind all the planning commissioners to get your ethics training done. Oh, sorry. Closing public comment. Then I will remind planning commissioners.
This is a brief one. I've been here six years in Douglas County, been through two master plan, plan updates with no community plan updates. Some of these issues brought up today and other projects, some to come before you, some of these things could be resolved at the community level. The plans are over 20 years old. The communities have changed and I would like to see that be brought forward as a priority, uh, in maybe the 2026 budget because I know we're reviewing the 2425 and it's not going to fit. But thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Billy. Any other? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And now, remind planning commissioners to get your ethics training done at the Ethics Commission site with the state and also your open meeting law training, which you can find on the website for the January 6th hearing with the Board of Commissioners. Both need filing as soon as possible and you can, uh, sign your open meeting law certificate down in the county manager's office. Thank you all. Welcome, Dan. Welcome, Jim. It's been a pleasure and we will see you next month.